I'll call the meeting back to order. We've had a public comment on item number four, which is the update on the COVID-19 response, and there's some actions we need to take to ratify actions and authorize any other necessary actions to address the COVID-19 pandemic. We're at the point now of discussion. Supervisor Fletcher, you wanted to make a motion, which I asked you to defer until we got done with the public comments. Someone turn over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would get a motion going here for discussion purposes, and I'm sure there will be some discussion and some other things. But, you know, I think out of the 53 million or so we're discussing on what we would do with, I would make a motion to direct the CAO to establish a fund totaling $25 million out of the New CARES Act funding for childcare providers struggling to remain open or reopen due to COVID-19 pandemic to cover costs in limited, including but not limited to staffing supplies, business resilience, mortgage and rental assistance, or capital improvements related to outdoor areas. And the second part of that would be to direct the CAO to establish a fund totaling $10 million in New CARES Act funding to support the county's Department of Public Health's testing, tracing, and treatment strategy specifically dedicated for San Diego County K through 12 public schools.
I'd like it, yeah. Okay, is there a second to that motion? Hey, dies for lack of a second Supervisor Jacob and then Desmond.
Well, may- maybe I would second if the maker wants to adjust it a little bit. As I, as I do the numbers, we've got 48.8 million, because we already spent some. So if the maker of the motion would cut the testing in half, 18.8 million for the Great Plates program, I would second the motion for discussion of that.
I would support that. I think that that's fair, and it shows our commitment to childcare, and it gets us moving with taking care of K through 12, along with addressing the concerns of our seniors. So I'd be happy to support that.
Okay, so we have a motion. If I could speak?
Yeah, ma- maybe before you speak, let me just make sure that we are all working on the same numbers. So we had 53.8 million, but 5 million of that, I think, was was already committed to funding the cities, the other 17 cities. So it's 48.8 million. And just so I understand, give me the numbers on on the balance to that. Where it's going.
So it would be 25 million for childcare to develop a comprehensive countywide strategy around childcare. It would be 5 million for testing to add into what we've already previously allocated for testing, but with that focused on K through 12 public education. And then the remaining 18 million would be focused on the senior program that Supervisor Jacob's outlined. Is that correct Supervisor Jacob?
Yeah, I think it's 18.8 million.
Okay.
To be exact, but yes, those would be the numbers. I'd like to speak to the motion first, then I have some additional comments, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I received this email yesterday from one of the family-owned restaurant owners, which is pretty typical, particularly in my district and in the unincorporated area, and even in some of my cities. And I'm reading from it. "I'm Richard Walker Jr., owner of a family-owned, family-funded, and family-operated gourmet breakfast restaurant in San Diego County. I consider my business extremely fortunate to have been selected as a Great Plates Delivered vendor over the last six-plus weeks. The program has been an incredible lifeline to my business, and in all reality, it's been the only thing that has kept my business alive. Because of the program, we were able to hire a full-time chef, a full-time driver, a full-time helper, and two part-time assembly persons. And overall, the program has allowed me to keep my two salaried management personnel on the payroll, where without it, there is no way I would have been able to keep at least one of them, maybe both. And now with foreclosure of my dining room, my already meager onsite revenue will go from nearly zero to absolute zero. This is as close to the end of the world as we can be for my small business. It's also cruc- critical to note that the program has been so crucial for the most vulnerable clients we serve. Each and every one of them is terrified of the program's possible ending. The calls from my clients began over the weekend and have hit a fever pitch throughout the day. Will this continue? What am I going to do?" And he's urging, "Please, I'm begging you, please do what you can do to keep Great Plates Delivered going. The lives of our clients and the life of my business are at stake." And I think that's typical of of others that are participating. I would ask this that the program is a part of the motion, but also that we either expand the existing program, or we do our own Greater Plates program, and we expand the number of restaurants throughout the region so that there's wide participation. So I'm a big supporter of childcare. We can't get people to work unless there's childcare. So I'm a big supporter of that and the testing. My comments today, and I've listened intently to all the testimony, and one of the areas I wanted to cover were on the deaths. The deaths are low, but from a national medical expert, he gives three reasons that the deaths are low. And I suspect, even though this is a national, at the national level, this is the same for San Diego County based on our numbers. Number one, the the death numbers are lagging, so we're not going to really see the results, maybe for weeks, maybe months out. Number two, more younger people are getting the virus, and they're surviving. So we're not seeing them in our hospitalization numbers, and we're not seeing them in our ventilator numbers, and we're not seeing them in the death numbers. And three, better treatment. The healthcare industry is learning as they go, and the treatment is better. So those were three reasons that really stuck in my mind that I think explains the reasons that we're seeing low death numbers. My second point I want to talk about is I do not think it is fair to close all restaurants or all businesses that are doing a good job indoor for indoor dining. And I'm picking on the restaurants in particular, because that seems to be where most of the violations have occurred. I just think there's a fairness issue here, and I don't know that we can do anything about it, but maybe we want to try to communicate with with the governor on this. I would strongly support posting the names of all of those that have violations. I think that that would create some peer pressure, and it would also let customers, potential customers, know who the violators are. I think that may have a positive effect in getting people to comply, people who are customers that are not wearing masks, to wear masks and the social distancing. So I strongly support that, and I think that is a call of our local public health officer. The state does it, by the way, for the senior, the assisted living facilities. They have a public website that all of those facilities, you can see on that website that have violations. So why don't we do it locally for those businesses that have been violators? And then let's allow those restaurants and those businesses that are doing a good job. And I think we reward them, because they're not going to want to be on the list. They're not on the list now. That's the overwhelming majority. Let them continue to do business. I've visited, I've done in very, very little in-room dining. But three, they're mom and pop restaurants, family-owned for years and years and years. Everybody that comes in's doing a good job, and the staff, the restaurants, all set up to do a really good job. And I just hate to see all of those restaurants, and I'm most familiar with the restaurant situation, being punished basically for the sins of a few and because the mistakes of a few. I think it's really, my next point, it has to do with the numbers. I think it's really easy for us to get caught up in the numbers. And yes, the numbers tell us the trends, and they tell us a story of sorts. But when you drill down on the numbers and you make the number real, I remember an article that was on the front page of the Union Tribune, I think it was a couple Sundays ago, and it was about a 37-year-old young man, married, had a couple of kids, some of you may have read it, healthy, 100% healthy, worked out, no underlying health conditions. He ended up in the hospital, and for almost 60 days was on a ventilator. He is lucky. He is lucky and very fortunate to have been able to walk out of there. So when we talk about numbers, let's not forget the one individual or those individuals that suffer as a result of this virus, though they are more than a number. These are real people. And those who think that they can go around not wearing a mask, that, and they don't care, they're not only jeopardizing the the safety and the health of themselves, and if they don't care about themselves, they need to think about their family, their friends, and the healthcare workers. The healthcare workers that are risking their lives and what they go through each and every day to care for those who are not only in the ICU rooms, but in the hospital rooms, but the nurses and the doctors. And if you think about those who don't want to wear masks, which is a real simple thing to do, that that is something that you should remember and have in your mind, the doctors and the nurses that are taking care of those folks. So people need to do the right thing, and and that's their job to do. We have a job to do. This is a bad virus. It spreads. And the only way we're going to curtail it is if everybody does their part to wear a mess mask, do the distancing. And you've said it, Mr. Chairman, I've heard Nathan say it. I mean, we've all said it to one extent or another. Freedom, I hear a lot about freedom in my district, in the Constitution. To me, freedom comes with responsibility, and that was what one speaker said, and he's totally right on. Freedom comes with responsibility. Our responsibility is a board to protect the public health and safety of the people in this region, and that's why we make the decisions that we do, particularly in this pandemic. It's to wear a mask. It's to distance. It's to wash hands and sanitize. Unfortunately, my last point, some in our community have acted in a very irresponsible manner. And it's because some in our community have put us in this position that we are where we are today. It's not because that we reopened. That's not the issue. I think we did the right thing. I think Dr. Wooton did the right thing. And we've reopened businesses in a responsible way. However, because some people resist to do the very small things that can prevent the spread of this virus, we are in this situation today. So it's on them. And I would hope that we can somehow get the message across that if everybody in our region, if they go out, just wear a mask if you're within six feet of another person. I mean, and if you go to a doctor's office or somewhere, it's such a simple thing, and I think it's going to be a way of life, unfortunately, until we get a vaccine. So if you don't think of yourself, think of your family, think of your friends, and think of your healthcare workers. And I'm done for now. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond, do you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to make a few comments, and then I will speak to the to the motion. You know, first of all, I want to thank all the county medical professionals for keeping San Diego County safe, safe, for allowing our beaches and our businesses that are now open and keeping people working and keeping the economy going, you know, in spite of some of the state's actions. You know, where I see us today, we know that testing is up. It has doubled since mid-May. Our positive cases are up. They've doubled since mid-June. And all, and throughout this, our hospital and ICU capacity has remained safe and stable. And this has always been talked about as sort of a lag, you know, the luring boogeyman behind that's always, well, just wait for the lag to happen. You know, and with our hospital and ICU capacity, even with help on our neighbors in Imperial and in Mexico, we've still been able to maintain those capacities at safe and stable rates. Only 15% of our total hospitalizations countywide are COVID cases. Hospitalizations are up. We've added about 100 more COVID patients from about 350 to 450 in our countywide system of hospitals since the testing doubled. But more people are now surviving the virus. You know, we talked about the fatality rate has decreased. Our median age for testing positive now has decreased from people in their 60s to those in their 40s, while the median age for death, thankfully, it's decreasing, has still remained at age 78. We do know that we, what we do know is we know our most vulnerable. We know how we have to test, but we've learned and now know better how to treat. And even even a double the amount of cases, we know that more are surviving. Even at the doubling of cases, those testing positive are still in the single digits. So you've got over a 90% chance of not getting the virus. You're even less likely to be hospitalized. And if you're under 70 years old by a Stanford study, you've got less than 4/100 of 1% of dying from the virus. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't disregard or stop using any of the safety provisions that the health officers are asking us to do. We should continue that. But while we're opening up the businesses and the economy, we're better at protecting our vulnerable now, and we're absolutely better than treating those with the virus. You know, COVID-19 is, is when I first asked the question, where'd the 19 come from? It was for the year 2019. We're now already halfway through 2020. This virus is not going away. We're going to have to be in this for the long haul, and it's something that we're all going to have to kind of learn to live with the virus. We need to keep people working, earning an income, and providing for themselves and their families. And we need to figure out how to open businesses and keep them open. You know, the seesawing of people's businesses and livelihood is devastating to businesses. You know, when I asked earlier about the why three weeks, is this, well, the extra week was more an added precaution. Well, that can mean the life or death of a of a business, a week's period of time, especially if you're still having to pay high rents and things like that. The vast majority of businesses have complied with the rules. They've practiced the social distancing. They've acquired the masks. And now they unfortunately are thrown, are lumped in and experiencing a second shutdown. And I feel for them. I really don't, I'm not convinced that it's warranted that we just do this, you know, sector-wide shutdown. We currently have 15% unemployment, and now today, with a more, today's action is, you know, brought down to us by the state, we're going to have more people joining the ranks of the unemployment. So I'm not aware of a single outbreak from a brewery or a winery or even the zoo. It's not going to come to anybody's surprise, but based on what I've seen, I see a need to continue to protect the vulnerable. I see a need to continue to take the precautions such as social distancing and sanitation and including wearing the masks. I don't see a need to close a sector of businesses that most individually, most individual businesses are doing the right thing. And we've all been to a restaurant. We've all gone out to places, and we've seen the best practices. And to shut those businesses down now after after doing, taking all the precautions, while they have been keeping their customers and employees safe, I think is a travesty. The state needs needs more thoughtful and targeted, need, I'm sorry, the state needs a more thoughtful and targeted approach. I think the heavy-handedness from the state is too severe, and the businesses, again, are really going to struggle to survive. I'll speak to the to the motion. You know, I wholeheartedly agree with the childcare, you know, the amount of going to childcare. And, you know, five minute for 10, 5 million for testing school children, that's fine. And Supervisor Jacob, I just disagree with the, I guess, the Great Plates. And I know they do a phenomenal job, and and they're a help to many people. But I think we can get more bang for the buck and cast a wider net. You know, the Great Plates is helping seniors. But if we were to put that money towards the San Diego County Food Banks, they provide a lot more food to a lot more people, including seniors, but also to families. You know, a lot of the people we hear, you know, that that are having issues or having rent issues or having problems are from the underserved communities. And a lot of those people, you know, they're not seniors. And a lot of the people that worked in restaurants that are getting laid off, you know, they also need help as well, and they're going to be food dependent. So I think we'd get a better bang for the buck. So I think we'd get a better bang for the buck if we were to look at a program that casts the wider net as far as feeding goes. Um, and I realize this, you know, that thirty-one restaurants are part of this great, um, Great Plates uh, effort. And I I don't want to see them close down or have that. But I think we could help a lot more people by, you know, funding food banks throughout the county. Because right now, based on the the Great Plates, um, ninety-six percent of Great Plates right now is funded by the FEMA, by the federal and state government. We only put in six percent right now. And it costs three and a half million dollars a year, comes to fifty-seven dollars a day per senior. And quite frankly, you can have a two-person household making over, making a hundred thousand dollars and qualify for Great Plates. I just think, I I think they're a great program. I understand they're helping seniors. But I think we can cast a wider net if we were to go with a food bank option instead of um, a Great Plates and help a lot more of our community, particularly those that are that have lost their jobs. Um, whereas a lot of the seniors hopefully are already retired. But um, so that would be, I I can't support the motion as is. But if if we could move it to move to more the food to the food banks, I think that'd be more appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just quickly comment, food banks don't support restaurants. Part of the Great Plates program supports our restaurants. That's why I read the email from one of the restaurant owners. That that's why it's a triple win. It's economic stimulus. It helps our restaurant industry in a very dire time as well as helping seniors. And then there's the senior check to make sure they're okay.
I just think it'd be casting a wider net, helping more people that are out of work. Um, I'm I'm not against seniors, I'm one myself. Uh, but I think wider net would be uh, more bang for the buck, uh, for what we, what the monies we have.
Okay, Supervisor Gaspar.
Thank you very much. I first wanted to start out by commenting on, since we're on the topic, the usage of those funds. I actually have a disagreement with the five million dollars going to the testing within the schools. As a mother of three, I prefer to keep my child's medical care between my trusted pediatric team. And if we're trying to come up with a way to test our kids at school, that's something as a parent I'd be extremely uncomfortable with. So I do not support five million dollars in testing going to our K through twelve schools as a mom. I want to start out my my comments by reminding people where we're at. This is day one hundred and fourteen of this pandemic response. And a lot of what we're seeing doesn't come as a surprise to me because we knew that as soon as the public started interacting again, that we would indeed experience a rise in the number of cases. That's what we're seeing now. Our job is the same as it's always been closely monitoring, making sure that our healthcare system doesn't get overwhelmed. Remember, that was the original goal. Since we've never changed that goal, I'm going to stick to that. And San Diego has done a commendable job, but the virus rages on. I also do have a problem thinking that all of this should be pinned on the few people who are not compliant with policies. I want to argue today that you will not achieve a higher level of compliance from the community with nearly anything. We're talking about major behavior change. So let me just tell you how proud I am of our community because I think in a very short period of time, within a hundred and fourteen days, you've seen massive behavioral change from our community. And everywhere I go and people that I see, they're trying so hard to do the right thing. There are always going to be a portion of the population that won't comply with things. Those are the people that won't follow any rules that you establish. But please know that I think out and about, there is a high level of compliance. And I'm unwilling to accept that we're in the place that we're in because of those who have made an exception to these policies. Um, I think that we need to stop shaming people. I think we need to stop pretending as though, you know, these individuals are responsible for all of this. Our business community has shouldered an extreme mitigation process. And adaptations to this business community are significant. Even if a business is open today, please know they're likely not turning a profit at all. It's very likely they're taking a huge loss. And the only thing keeping them afloat is perhaps some relief that came through from the state or the federal government and those funds. But other than that, you can't take a restaurant, for example, you can't take away half of their tables and think that that business is still penciling wealth. It likely means that half of their staff isn't back. It likely means they've made a decision not to reopen their restaurant to dining. Because now we're restricting to outside dining, take a look around at most of your restaurants. Are they going to be able to, with their outdoor patio that maybe has ten tables, take five of those tables because you have to comply with the social distancing? Can they with five tables pencil this business? Can they bring their staff back? Can they bring their cooks back? The answer is likely no. So please know that even our business community, when it's open for business, it's struggling. Most of our business community will tell you that if you spend any time with them at all. But they've made significant changes and I want to applaud our business community because I have seen nothing but solid compliance. I have not set foot in a business yet that I did not see all of these measures being implemented and respected by the patrons there as well. So again, my thanks go out to our business community. Thank you for maintaining the very few jobs that are out there now. Thank you for making sure that people can put food on their table and put a roof over their heads. Hundred and fourteen days is a long time to wait for people without a paycheck. You know, we've made significant changes to the world all around us in San Diego. We built capacity in our healthcare system, we've adapted to the masks with some exceptions. We've done everything that has been asked of us and the virus still remains in San Diego. We have to protect the most vulnerable in our population. It's very clear in what we're seeing. What we thought early on was the case with the vulnerable population, those at-risk groups. It's only been confirmed by our data. The name of the game is protecting the vulnerable. But we can't continue to choose between a shutdown of our economy and protecting the vulnerable. And I don't think that we have to do one or the other ever. In doing so, by continuing to shut down, we create a large population of people who are now vulnerable due to job loss, food insecurity, housing insecurity, and as presented this morning by Dr. Luke, psychiatric illness. Our young people are suffering greatly. Again, as a mom, I have three kids at home. I see this. You can see it in them. They're suffering. They don't have all of their outlets. They're losing their passion, they're losing their purpose, they're losing their ability to see a a better day outside of this pandemic response. And so we can't turn off our economy. We can't turn it on and off, just like we can't turn the virus on and off. And I agree with Supervisor Jacob about how easy it is to get caught up in the numbers. But look at what the numbers are telling us right now. We have a significant rise in cases in the younger population. And we should look at that and understand where we're headed with this. Now, I I know there's been lots of statisticians following this that we haven't heard from throughout this pandemic response. But when you take a look at San Diego statistics, I had a chance to review the age statistics and the percent chance of surviving if infected in the age bands. And it's quite high in San Diego and the public needs to understand that. The age twenty to twenty-nine bracket, if you get this illness, your chance of surviving is ninety-nine point nine percent. Same with thirty to thirty-nine age band. When you go to forty to forty-nine, you have a ninety-nine point four percent chance. Fifty to fifty-nine, ninety-eight point eight, sixty to sixty-nine, ninety-five point nine, seventy to seventy-nine, eighty-eight point three, and eighty plus, seventy-five point eight. When you look at all the age bands together, a ninety-seven point five percent survivability rate in San Diego. And we know we have seventeen thousand cases in our community. And I want you to look closely at that statistic that deals with community outbreaks. An outbreak is a really scary term. Most people think of an outbreak and they think of thousands of people becoming infected. But as you've learned, that's not really the case. We're talking about three people in a number of instances with these outbreaks. We have six hundred total people that have been linked back to community outbreaks. Six hundred people for community outbreaks out of the seventeen thousand identified cases. And many of these are unfairly assigned back to a business because, again, a family that's out dining and makes up three people, I'm sorry, not a family, but friends. Let's say you can go to a restaurant with your friends right now and three people contract this virus, that's back on the restaurant. And I think that's really unfortunate. And I also think that there's no way to navigate around some of these things from happening. So we have to carefully review which metrics we're most interested in tracking, and there's several of them. But again, it's about not overwhelming the hospital system. So we we have younger people who have, that are asymptomatic, that have mild to moderate cases. We've heard a lot about herd immunity. You know, when this younger population that has a wonderful chance at recovery from all of this contracts as a very mild to moderate case or no symptoms at all, that's a wonderful step toward creating that herd immunity that our public health officer has spoken about before as being important. These are unlikely to be hospitalized cases, these are unlikely to be ICU cases. These are unlikely to be cases that overwhelm our hu- our hospital system, which is actually a really positive thing. At the same time, how long can we wait? How long can we be in the shutdown mode? How many times are we going to go back in this? My biggest problem that we have altogether is that we have a complete peanut butter approach. And this isn't coming from our public health officer. So for those who want to pin all of this back on our public health officer, uh, please know that above the public health officer, and in a few exceptions because we have been more strict than the state on a couple things. But by and large, these decisions have been made in Sacramento, they've been made by our governor, and it's been very much a cookie cutter approach. We don't need the governor to make these decisions for us. We have a talented clinical team here, we have epidemiologists here, we have our embedded hospital partners. And it's really important that we make decisions on shutting down sectors of our economy that are consistent with the trends that we're seeing here in San Diego, consistent with the problems we're seeing as a community in San Diego. And I agree with what Supervisor Desmond had to say about shutting down sectors that we have no known linkage in our community to problems. Why are we being asked to do these things? It's really problematic. A targeted approach can never come out of Sacramento because it's hundreds of miles away. There are many counties within the state of California. We happen to be the second largest county in the state of California. Local control needs to be restored across the board, end of story. We cannot continue to have the governor tell us what is the best step for our community. I know that we can put our trust and our confidence in our epidemiologists, our public health officer, our medical team and our hospital partners who closely track what's happening here. So I really would like to ask my colleagues again to write a letter to the governor, to ask the governor to immediately restore our local control over these decisions. We've gotten a letter from Councilmember Kate. It's asked us to reevaluate our data in a two-week period because maybe we can make a compelling argument to the governor to get these sectors reopened sooner. Perhaps we ask in that same letter for the evaluation period to be two weeks. And I just think it's really important, time and time again, to go back and ask the governor to restore our local control, put it back in our hands, put it back in our accountability. I also think it would be interesting for us to consider having a statistician embedded on our clinical team, along with our epidemiologists, along with our public health officer, our medical team and those hospital partners. Because at this point in time, a holistic view is required. We need to look at the impacts overall from both the virus and the continued shutdowns because people's lives are being destroyed at the same time. And we can't choose one or the other. We don't have to choose one or the other. We can protect the vulnerable while not crushing our economy here locally. So at this point in time, I really would love to have a statistician take an overall look, a holistic view at how well we're doing as a community, to help us make decisions moving forward as well. But again, we're not able to make our own decisions right now. It's all in the hands of the governor. The only thing we can do is be more restrictive in the state of California, who's already very restrictive in what they're doing in their response. And it will not work for our community. So again, I just hope my colleagues will support allowing Supervisor Cox to write another letter to the governor, asking once again to restore our local control and put it back into our medical team here in San Diego. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Well, I think there's a motion on the floor right now that pertains to the funding. But I, the chairman would like to make it as a separate motion or I conclude it in the motion that's on the table that that we send that letter back to the governor, um, asking for local control, just reinforcing our prior position as a board. And then also, I'm curious to have a statistician take a look at our our local numbers as well.
Let's let's consider that as a follow-up motion, if that's okay with the supervisor.
Ms. Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
Chairman, um, maybe Tom can jump in here if he needs to. But if you're going to vote on any allocations of the CARES Act money, you would actually need to include in the motion the appropriation of the forty-eight point eight million dollars uh, before we would be able to allocate it out. Tom, is that, is that correct?
That is correct, and that, of course, would be a for-vote item.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, um, I I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask staff, and that is in regards to the the Great Plates program, which I think is a great program. I'm just kind of curious, how many, how many people are participating in that program at this time?
Uh, Chairman, this is, this is Andy Pease. Um, we have over eighteen hundred folks in the program right now. Um, year-to-date, we've had close to two thousand seniors, some have have dropped out and they get three meals a day.
Okay, um, one of the concerns I have is I I think that the best program we have going right now is the T-three program. The the uh, the program where we're we're testing, we're we're tracing people that have been identified, uh, to have a contact with people and then obviously getting them into treatment. I know that in the original CARES Act appropriation, I think we earmarked a hundred million dollars towards that. How are we doing in regards to the the funding for that? Because I think that's that's one area where I'm concerned that maybe we're we're shortchanging.
Supervisor, we're we're closing out the year-end costs right now. So these are estimates, but right now for the T-three component, um, it's going to be somewhere probably just shy of ten million dollars for for nineteen-twenty. Having said that, as I think you're all aware, the T-three components have been ramping up over the past weeks and months since we stood it up. And we anticipate those costs to exponentially go up in in the coming months. So we're allocated a hundred million, uh, we we will spend clearly around ten million for nineteen-twenty. And we're still looking to see how much we'll need for for twenty-twenty-one.
Can can anybody tell me, um, I I know we are doing a number of sites. I know it varies from day to day. I think I was talking with Nick yesterday and there was like twenty-three different sites around the county that were being uh, doing testing. Um, are we doing any testing at all on the border?
Chair Chairman Cox, Nick Macho speaking. Um, we have a number of sites in South Bay, as you know. Um, Aquatica being probably one of our closest in proximity. And so the the South Bay saturation, as you know, that almost has half of all of our testing sites are in South Bay. So in terms of proximity to the border with all the sites in South, that's how we've been addressing the needs of the border.
And I'm not so sure that I would say that Aquatica is is going to be addressing people coming across from the border. Uh, and these are essential workers, they may be green card workers, they may be American citizens that live in in Mexico. And I realize that we've been attempting to try to get the federal government to step in and and provide, you know, funding for testing on the border. But up to this point, they they have not seemed fit to to do that. I know UCSD came up with a a program that I don't know whether we could, we could afford totally. But I would really like to see us do something that would direct more testing for people coming across the border, even if it's on a voluntary basis. Because as we know, every day when we get our situation report, we we get a an update in regards to how many people are coming across that have been already identified as as COVID positive. Excuse me. Um, well, let me ask if there's any other discussion.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to clarify one thing based on a question that you had asked on the Great Plates. While they're surveying about, well, it's about eighteen hundred now. Um, talking to Kim Gallow, because I had a briefing on this earlier in the week. She had eighty-five hundred calls, eighty-five hundred calls. So it shows that there's a huge need out there. And again, you know, it, you could, you could call it economic stimulus for the it economic stimulus for the restaurants as well as helping seniors. So I don't know what your thoughts are, but my suggestion would be that, to the maker of the motion, that first we try to get agreement on the distribution of the monies, the $48.8 million. And then we can refer that to come back on August 4th so that the CIO has time to put together the actual programs. And at that time, I would suggest we could deal with the actual allocation of the dollars. So I think first we need to get agreement on how we're going to divide up this money and see if there's at least three votes to do that, I don't know.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. I'm fine with that. I think we could look at the, either bringing it back in August, or if we provide the direction on the categories, then we can make it a part of the budget process, which would be happening in the similar timeframe. So I think we have a few options to consider for implementation. But I do think it's important, we, you know, provide some direction on where we think this funding should go. I also think it's important that we can begin the planning process around childcare. I think we all agree that is a vital component, and it's going to take some time to get folks together, come up with a plan. And I think we have general, not unanimous, but general agreement that we have to do something to help support our schools, as those two things are vital components of our economy and then the other. So I'm fine with that. I think if we do that, provide some direction, don't allocate it, then we can either allocate it, consider the allocation in our August meeting, or just incorporate it into the budget process.
So we would not be taking final action today?
We would be taking a vote to direct this, and then the allocation of it would either come in the budget process or to subsequent board meeting.
Or on the 4th, maybe, who knows? We'll see.
So let me-
We could take that $5 million out of the testing and put it into the food bank, maybe that's the compromise, or to small businesses.
Okay, so let me ask the maker of the motion, which I believe was Supervisor Jacob.
That was Fletcher.
Okay, Supervisor Fletcher, I'm sorry. Do you want to basically accept the recommendations that staff has here and include that we refer the additional $48.8 million and how that would be allocated to the CIO, but to give some guidelines in regards to where that might be spent? Is that-
What I would do, Mr. Chair, I think we have certainly an agreement on the childcare component, $25 million to childcare, and I would leave in the money to support our schools. Our superintendents of the county office of other school districts are begging for help to come up with some testing protocols. And again, we have some really world-class minds that are working on how we can put in place a system around monitoring our schools, and I think it's vitally important that as a public health agency, we commit ourselves to tackling this issue of supporting our schools in the efforts to ensure they're safe when kids come back. So I think with three votes, we have some parameters around this. If we wanted to have the third one just be the 18.8 is around food service and provide some time to work on that, that's fine. But I do think it's important that we start the process on childcare and that we make a commitment to testing for our schools with at least the $30 million that was outlawed.
Do you be willing to include an evaluation by the CIO in regards to potentially providing some funding for testing at the border?
Of course.
Yes?
Yes.
I would agree with that.
Further discussion?
Just a little bit more, and I realize this is going back to the CIO for discussion, but for, I guess, her guidance on this. I just want to, you know, Feeding San Diego served 7.9 million meals between March 14th and June 28th. That's like 2.9 or 2.6 million meals per month. The Jacob and Cushman of San Diego Food Bank served 35,000 meals to people during this COVID crisis every month, and of that number, 177,000 were children. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I guess, I'd ask that the CIO come back for the best, I guess, bang for our buck as far as the meals are concerned. I don't, you know, I don't even know if throwing $5 million at testing at the border is, you know, if that's throwing money, I don't know if that makes a dent or not, or if it's really it should cost, and if it's only, it's only one time, I don't know that that, I guess we'll hear back from the CIO on the value of those dollars are there. But one thing I did want to point out, and I do, I'm glad we all agree on the childcare. In my district, Boys and Girls Clubs provide a vast amount of childcare services, and they've been begging, you know, begging, they've been coming to my office and asking for, you know, dollars so that they can, you know, provide for these kids, and now they can only have one kid per, you know, every, for every adult, I guess, or every teacher, and they have to have different rooms and separate rooms. So I'd like to make sure that within the childcare, I know we gave money to the YMCA last time, which is good, but in my district, Boys and Girls Clubs are much more effective, I guess, than our, we've got only a few YMCA's, but the Boys and Girls Club far outweigh. So I'd like to be able to have them included in that childcare dollars or that equation as you come up with things. And even our Vista Community Clinics, our community clinics up here also are, you know, looking for dollars in childcare on a medical sense as well, as far as coming back with, I guess, suggestions on how to spend the childcare dollars.
Real quick, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think Supervisor Desmond, I think that's, if we're asking the CIO to come up with a comprehensive plan, it would be entirely appropriate to work with Boys and Girls Clubs and other providers to make sure that they're included in that, and I think that's the aim of directing to come up with a plan on the $25 million. On the border funding, I believe Supervisor Cox is just to direct the CIO to look at the feasibility of what we could do there. I know the federal government is looking, our congressional delegation is working on funding specifically around the border, but I think that $5 million in here would be directed towards getting us moving towards schools with directing the CIO to look at the feasibility of doing something around the border. Is that, that's my understanding of what we're doing.
And I wanted to clarify, because it was mentioned, food services, food services, it must include the restaurants, because that's part of whether we call it the Great Plates program, or whatever we call it. But the whole idea of this is to help the restaurant industry at the same time we're serving seniors of the most vulnerable. Now, how that's done, that's going to be up to the CIO, and then they can come back, CIO and her staff could come back on the 4th of August with a way to do it, like with the childcare, and like with border testing, if that's, if we need, and if we need that, and then how much do we need to do that, and then the testing for the schools. And I would support that as a secondary to the motion.
Well, and I also wanted to mention on the border testing, I've worked extensively on this effort also alongside our hospital partners, and I will say that UCSD did prepare a proposal of what it would cost to do something like this at the border, a more extensive effort. In fact, they prepared a very thorough analysis of different levels of testing that could be done at the border, so there were different prices essentially attached to it. From the federal government's perspective, 75% of that is covered, it's indeed covered under our emergency expenses, so we're talking about the remaining 25%. We made a pitch to both the state and the federal government to help cover that 25% that's currently the gap. There haven't been any takers on the state or federal level to help us out with that 25% that's not covered under FEMA. So at this point in time, UCSD has already done a lot of work in this area. I would suggest that we look at the proposal that UCSD has floated out there dealing with border testing, and they've already laid out for us a variety of options based on the level of testing that you're looking for at the border.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge Supervisor Gaspar did some early work on that in discussions, I think, with the Vice President and Communications with the administration, so I thank you for that. And I guess, you know, I'd just like to have the CIO take a look at it, dust off, and see if there's a way that maybe we can leverage the money with state and federal funding to make something happen. Let me ask the maker of the motion, Supervisor Fletcher, do you want to include the other recommendations, including receiving the COVID report in this motion?
I'm fine with that. I think the other ones around the letter are appropriate to take up in a separate item. So we can add those and then get that out of the way, and then come back into the others.
Okay, well, go ahead and vote on this motion then as modified, and then we'll come to Supervisor Gaspar for her additional recommendation.
Could we have the clerk read the motion, please?
Mr. Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The motion includes the staff recommendations that are included in the board letter, and then to direct the CIO to consider the additional $48.8 million in CARES Act funding to return to the board on August 4th for discussion on the allocations of funding that include $25 million for childcare, $5 million for testing at schools, 18.8 for food services, that must include restaurants, and then feasibility for funding for testing at the border. Please let me know if I missed anything.
And just for clarification, number three, when it says, "Take other action necessary to address it," the action that you just mentioned, and then any other actions would be that action, so you don't actually have to say that number three, it would be replaced with what you've got there.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess, I'm troubled that, I guess, the result has to include restaurants. I'm not against restaurants, I just want to make sure we're getting the best bang for the buck. And if we're going to start doing that, then I'd say then the recommendation has to include Boys and Girls Clubs at the, you know, in, for childcare. It's just, to me, I think we should let our CIO come back with the best program in her recommendation for the food services for people. I don't know, I just, I think it's, I don't know if I can support it with saying the result has to have restaurants in there, or not. I just, I'm not anti-restaurants, I'm pro-restaurants, but I just want to get the best bang for the buck out of what we're doing.
Supervisor, I thought you were for economic stimulus and help small businesses.
That's not fair, Diane.
That's a part of, that's a part of what this is about.
Nope, 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 no, not taking that. The, you know, I'm all for open up business, but right now, we are laying off restaurants or having to close, and lay off a lot of their people that are working there, and those people in there have families and children, and they need to have food. I'm fine with serving seniors, but I think we need to cast a wider net and to say, okay, well, you said this or that, it's not a fair statement, I want to get the most bang for our buck and use our taxpayer dollars as best we possibly can.
Can I ask a question of our legal counsel, please, Chairman? Tom, are you comfortable with the procedure, the process here? Because it seems like we've turned a four-vote item into a three-vote item, and we've given the CIO quite a bit of direction and are locking her in to quite a bit through this action. So are you comfortable in what seems to me to be an end-around a four-vote item?
Supervisor, it would not be a four-vote item because there's no appropriations of money at this time. It is a direction that is giving parameters for the CIO to return with proposals that your board is then going to have to decide whether or not they like the proposals that are being presented to the board, because by the nature of the motion as it stands right now, there is some guidance given, but I don't, but other than the areas that you have fairly clear direction, there's quite a bit of discretion left to the CIO. She's going to have to evaluate all those things and bring it back, and at that time, you're then going to have to make some kind of a decision as far as money is concerned. At this point, there is no determination that money be appropriated, and so there's no issue as far as four-vote is concerned.
So the answer is yes, you're comfortable?
I am comfortable with that.
Thank you.
So can we assume then that the dollar amounts that have been referenced in the motion are suggestions or not direction to the CIO, and the CIO have the ability to take a look at childcare, take a look at testing, take a look at food programs, including Great Plates, and maybe even, you know, evaluating whether there's something there for the food banks? Is that a fair summation? We're not giving specifically dollar options, just suggestions?
Chairman Cox, from what I hear of the motion, it is to have the CIO come back with her recommendations on what should be done. There are suggestions as far as where the money should be spent. If, for example, it's found that the amount that would be spent isn't really reasonable for a particular area, she would have the flexibility to come back and make a recommendation of a different amount, because you are not going to, you are not allocating that money, and so you are giving her that discretion to come back.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay. There's no further discussion? I'll ask the court, please call the roll.
Thank you. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
No.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
No.
Chairman Cox, that motion passes with Vice Chairman Desmond and Supervisor Gaspar voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, Supervisor Gaspar, you had an additional motion you wanted to make?
Yes, I just wanted to make a motion to have our chairman reinforce San Diego's desire to restore our local control over decision-making regarding our pandemic response. And then additionally, I'd like to direct our CIO to engage a third-party statistician to aggregate our local data and come up with a high-level analysis.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion?
I just have a quick question. I wonder if Dr. Wooden, I'm just curious if we have updates on our numbers today? I'm just curious, since we're still on the COVID item.
Let's see.
I don't know if Dr. Wooden-
Supervisor Fletcher, the numbers for today, 578 new cases with 12 new deaths.
Any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, for me to support the motion, I want to know what the cost is going to be for the statistician. I don't, I don't, I don't know who that would be or how much it would cost us to do that.
Okay, we can have the CIO look into what the cost would be to engage with the third party, if that makes you more comfortable with it.
And you're, so the motion is to refer the statistician issue to the CIO to take a look at-
What it would cost to engage with a third party to aggregate the data for us on a local level.
And the cost of doing that, and then, and what the benefits would be to us?
Yes.
If that's all that's in your motion, I'm fine with that.
Yes, that's what's in my mind.
Okay.
I have a quick comment, Chairman Cox, when appropriate.
Do you mind just clarifying one thing? Your motion still has the reference to a letter to the governor?
That's correct. Asking, again, reinforcing our desire for local control in our pandemic response here in San Diego.
I don't, Mr. Chairman, on that part, I can't support that, we already did that, it's redundant, and I don't think it's necessary, but I will support referring to the CIO to take a look at the statistician issue.
I'm kind of in the same position as Supervisor Jacob. I think we sent a letter, we haven't gotten a response back. I don't know that a second letter is going to do anything, but I certainly would be wanting to look at the statistician request.
Okay, that's fine, I'll remove it and I'll throw it out there. Perhaps Supervisor Desmond wants to co-author a letter with me, we've done that before, I'm happy to reinforce the same message. I think since it hasn't even gotten a response, this is the second-largest county in the state of California, I think it's irresponsible of the governor not even provide a response to San Diego County. I get that he's busy at this time, but I think that a letter does warrant a letter back in response. So I will do that on a side effort, and I'll leave the motion just with the request to the CIO regarding the statistician.
Well, wasn't the letter nuanced that we would like to have local control within two weeks and make these decisions here?
It was.
Opposed to three weeks? So it was a different letter. I mean, it was more, it was, we'd like to have 14 days instead of the 21 days before we, you know, as an option for San Diego County to open these businesses back up. That was my understanding.
Correct.
Okay, well, let me ask you what the motion is, because I think we should take in a vote pretty quick.
It sounds as though I don't have the support, I don't have the votes that it would be required to leave that in the motion. So at this point in time, it's asking the CIO to look at what it would cost to engage a third-party statistician to aggregate our local data and provide us with a high-level analysis of the data.
Presumably that would come back at the August 4th meeting?
That's my desire, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick comment on that. One, sometimes not getting a response is a response, maybe the most polite one that's possible. But I think the second point is, we can't, we can't, it's challenging to say that we trust our public health department, and we value them and we rely on them, when they have incredible teams of statisticians who regularly go in-depth. We have some of the smartest folks in the public health world who work in our county public health department, and every day, they challenge the number- public health department, and every day, they challenge the numbers, and they challenge the assumptions, and they relook at data in new ways and new lights, and they're constantly exploring in countless different ways what we're seeing, and what it means, and how it works. And so if we have faith and confidence in them, then, which I do, then I am happy to rely on their continued expertise and guidance in this as we move forward. And so, you know, I don't think that we need to pay to go find another statistician to tell us what our incredible team of statisticians tell us each and every single day as we deal with this pandemic.
Any further discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Fletcher, no.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Chairman Cox, that motion passes with Supervisor Fletcher voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, our next item is item number eight, and I believe this is authorized as a competitive solicitation for agent independent services, home and community-based services. We did have one request from the public to speak on this item, let me ask the clerk if that person is still online.
Mr. Chairman, that person has not called in yet.
Okay.
If they would still like to speak on this item, we'd encourage them to dial into the conference line now, using the instructions that were provided to you.
Hey, let me just ask very quickly if there's any additional staff comments on this item?
No, there are not.
Okay, well, hearing that there's no presentation, and since we don't have any speaker at this time, I think it would be appropriate for us to go ahead and take action on this.
I move to approve.
Motion by Supervisor Desmond, second by Supervisor Jacob. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Chairman Cox, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
The next item we have is item number twelve, and this is the San Diego Small Business Stimulus Program. Let me acknowledge that I am going to have to leave in about five minutes, so as we get started on this, I have a medical appointment that I don't, I can't reschedule at this point. And I know that at one point, we had ten speakers, I'm not sure where we are, Andrew, with the number of speakers we have on this item, but I would anticipate we'll get started on this, and then I will turn it over to our Vice Chairman, Jim Desmond, to go ahead and complete the balance of this item and the remaining items on the agenda, which there's just one other item, which is a report by Tracy Sandoval, item number seventeen. So let me ask the clerk, how many speakers do we have on this item?
Mr. Chairman, we have twenty-four requests to speak on this item, and I would encourage any members of the public that did request to speak on this item, please dial into the conference line now, using the instructions provided to you, and again, you'll be muted until it is your turn to speak.
Mr. Chairman, we also have a short presentation on this item, if you would like to hear it, otherwise, you can go directly to the public comments.
I would suggest we go ahead and have the presentation by staff, short presentation.
Thank you, and let me introduce Ebony Shelton, who will be presenting the presentation. Thank you.
Chairman Cox and members of the board, today we bring forward recommendations in response to your board's direction on May nineteenth to implement an economic stimulus program funded by seventeen million dollars of federal CARES Act funding. The program will provide a much-needed lifeline to small businesses and restaurants within the region to help them open, keep open, and prevent them from going out of business. This program has been designed to provide needed flexibility to address the unique needs of each district with funds equally distributed by district at three-point-four million dollars each, while also removing obstacles and barriers that have limited success with similar programs. The program will be made available to established for-profit and nonprofit agencies with fewer than one hundred employees headquartered and operating within San Diego County. In order to qualify for the program, these entities must have experienced a clearly documented and quantifiable financial hardship as a result of COVID-nineteen. Applicants are eligible to receive funding for expenses that are a direct result of supporting public health and response activities associated with the pandemic, which are clearly driven by efforts to respond to COVID-nineteen. To assist, applicants will be provided with a list of eligible activities, included the examples listed here, which range from efforts to innovate and promote business outdoors to the development of safe reopening plans. This list is not exhaustive, but rather serves as a guide. Funds may be used in accordance with any use permissible under the federal guidelines. Applications will be accepted online, with completed applications due no later than October sixteenth, twenty-twenty. However, the application due date may close sooner if funds are allocated prior to this date. Each district office may bring forward recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for final awards during regularly scheduled board meetings between now and November seventeenth. Grant recipients will be required to enter into a grant agreement with the county, which will cover eligible expenditures incurred between March first and December thirtieth. And subject to your questions, that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions to staff before we hear the public testimony? If not, then we'll go ahead and proceed directly to the public testimony, and we'll ask the clerk to call up the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will note for the record that we received one e-comment on this item, and we have five individuals on the line to address the board as of this moment. They are quickly calling in. As a reminder for the callers, if you do not wish to speak on this item, hang up and call back when the board begins discussion of the last item, item seventeen. We'll be calling speakers by the last four digits of their phone number. You will hear a notification that your call has been unmuted. Each caller will be asked to state their name for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the board. You'll hear this sound when your time is up, so please conclude your comments at that time. And I would remind the speakers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. Erin, if you could please call to identify the first caller.
Yes, our first caller is seven-one-one-three.
Hello, board, my name is Jacqueline Schleppnick. I'm a board member of the Hispanic, San Diego County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and the reason that I am calling today is because I am in support of this measure, and, I'm sorry. I want to see our county economically recover from this pandemic, and we must approach a recovery using an equity framework. Every community is unique in their needs to reopen businesses, and we must respond to this diverse need for an inclusive economic recovery. For minority businesses, enterprises, these obstacles are amplified by cultural and language barriers, historic race and ethnicity policy decisions, and location traits that place minority businesses and those communities in a persistent competitive and recovery disadvantage. We are requesting each supervisor prioritize funding towards the district's greatest needs, such as promise zones, opportunity zones, minority-owned, women-owned, and veteran-owned small businesses. That there be an equitable application process, avoid a first-come, first-served application process, provide grant funding with pre-application period, and provide application information in all languages. Provide funding for outreach to historically undeserved communities through the Strategic Alliance and their partners. Provide funding for accredited technical assistance providers, such as the Strategic Alliance Small Business Development Centers, to perform no-cost counseling services to all the businesses in need. To achieve a truly inclusive economic recovery in San Diego County, we must focus on the outreach in underserved communities and quarters, providing technical assistance, equitable access to capital, minority-owned businesses, and to ensure they are not only covered, but grow proportionally to the rest of the economy. I also wanted to tell you that I am very concerned about Dr. Wooton's situation, and I do hope that she does have more security. I think it's very unfair how she is treated, being that she's doing the best she can under the circumstances, and I do want to remind everyone that we must wear a mask, we must wear a mask. And thank you to all our healthcare workers, as the numbers skyrocket, remember, COVID is real, and as a part of the community, I'm here to serve you. And thank you, board, for helping through this terrible pandemic. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is seven-eight-three-zero.
Hello, my name is Andrew Harvey, and I am with the Chicano Federation. Every community is unique in their needs to reopen businesses, and we must respond to these diverse needs for an inclusive economic recovery. We are requesting, provide funding for outreach to historically underserved communities through the Strategic Alliance and their partners. Each supervisor prioritize funding towards their district's greatest needs, such as promise zones, opportunity zones, minority-owned, women-owned, and veteran-owned businesses. To achieve a truly inclusive economic recovery in San Diego County, we must focus on outreach in underserved communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is eight-two-nine-three.
Good afternoon, Jason Pagio with the Asian Business Association and the Strategic Alliance. We greatly appreciate the opportunity staff and the supervisors' offices have provided us some feedback for this item. While we hope to have a consistent equity-centered process across all districts for how these applications are valued and distributed, we understand that all districts are diverse within their communities, and our intent with our recommendations is to ensure those most impacted receive funding equitably, specifically that each supervisor prioritize funding towards their district's greatest needs, such as opportunity zones, promise zones, business improvement districts, whether the business is minority-owned, women-owned, and veteran-owned, and have the opposite financial planning, provide indicators in the applications for businesses who can mark those classifications. That there be an equitable application process, unlike what we saw from the federal government with the Paytech Protection Program and the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, and locally with the City of San Diego Small Business Relief Fund. Avoid a first-come, first-served process. Provide grant funding with a pre-application period and in language, so that folks have proper time to apply. And as with the county's livewell priorities, provide funding for outreach to historically underserved communities, which can be done through the Strategic Alliance and our partners who know their communities. Lastly, find funding opportunities, and perhaps when item four comes back from C A O, we can look at accredited technical assistance providers to increase their intake and no-cost counseling, such as the S P D C to long-term work with these businesses, as the county does with nonprofits to provide wraparound services for vulnerable populations and businesses. With so much uncertainty, unfunded mandates, and changing regulations, we need technical assistance providers to help support businesses with compliance and constantly evolving reopening safety guidelines, as we just saw in the last twenty-four hours. The safety of our residents and our local economy depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is three-five-eight-eight.
Hello, my name is Danae Ramos with Jacob Center for Neighborhood Innovation. If we truly want to achieve an inclusive economic recovery in San Diego County, we must focus on outreach in underserved communities and quarters, providing technical assistance and equitable access to capital to minority-owned businesses, to ensure they are not only recover, but grow proportionally to the rest of the economy. We are requesting each supervisor prioritize funding towards their district's greatest needs, such as promise zones, opportunity zones, minority-owned, women-owned, and veteran-owned businesses. That there will be an equitable application process, avoiding a first-come, first-served application process, provide grant funding with a pre-application period, and provide application information in language. If we want to see our county economically recover from this pandemic, we must approach recovery using an equity framework. Every community is unique in their needs to reopen businesses, and we must respond to these diverse needs for an inclusive economic recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is nine-three-six-four.
Good afternoon, Michelle Krug, and I just, I'm looking forward to seeing how this money will be distributed, because as we all know, on the federal level, a lot of the not really small businesses were the ones that got it, and I really, really want to see our mom-and-pop enterprises actually getting the leg up and being able to survive through this. That's all. I'm just hoping that the monitoring will really be monitoring and that it does get distributed not by the people that can write the grants most easily, because they are usually not the ones that are in survival mode. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is seven-three-five-six.
Hello, my name is Iris Garcia, and I represent the San Diego County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I'd like to thank the supervisors for answering my call, and a special thank you to Supervisor Fletcher for investing in the Hispanic community, as well as thank you, Desmond, for expanding on the procurement opportunities that we have in the city, in the county. But my, the reason for my call is because I would like to see the county recover from the pandemic using an equitable framework. For minority business enterprises, these obstacles are amplified by culture and language barriers, historic race and ethnic policy decisions, and location traits that place minority businesses and those communities in a persistent competitive and recovery disadvantage. We're requesting that each supervisor prioritizes funding towards their district's greatest needs, such as promise zones, opportunity zones, minority-owned, women-owned, and veteran-owned small businesses. That there is an equitable application process, avoiding first-come, first-served application processes. Provide grant funding with pre-application periods, and provide application information in language. Third, provide funding for outreach to historical underserved communities through the Strategic Alliance and their partners. Providing funding for accredited technical assistance providers, such as the Strategic Alliance Small Business Development Centers, to perform no-cost counseling services to all businesses in need. To achieve true inclusive economic recovery in San Diego County, we must focus on outreach in underserved communities to provide technical assistance and equitable access to capital to minority-owned businesses, to ensure that not only recover, but grow the economy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is eight-eight-seven-six.
Hi, my name is Viviana Lopez, and I'm calling as a concerned small business owner and also as a minority advocate. I'm calling because I, too, would like to see that these funds be distributed equitably among our minority and underserved communities who have been historically been underserved, and that I would love to see that these funds be distributed, and that each supervisor prioritize their funding towards their district's and their businesses' greatest needs, such as promise zones, opportunity zones, minority-owned, women-owned, and veteran-owned small businesses who have been left in the dust historically over and over again, even through the federal monies that have gone out. We would like to see an equitable application process, avoiding this first-come, first-served application process. A lot of small business owners who are minority-owned, they don't have a lot of access to the information that a lot of larger and non-minority business owners have, as far as having information so that they can get their applications in as quickly as other businesses, so the first-come, first-served model doesn't, doesn't work. Minority and women business owners and veteran business owners need a different approach so that they can be served in an equitable manner. We would also like to provide funding for accredited technical assistance providers, such as the Strategic Alliance. The Strategic Alliance serves all our minority businesses in different sectors, and they understand the minority businesses better than anyone else, and I think they would be better informed and more prepared to be able to distribute these funds in an equitable manner, as would be required. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and that concludes public testimony on this item. Vice Chair Desmond?
Okay, well, thank you very much, and thank you to all the speakers who spoke today and waited on the phone most of the day. Do we have any questions from any of the board members for our speakers? Any discussion?
Just real, real quick, Mr. Vice Chair, I would just like to add to this that we request translation to the federal threshold languages of Spanish, Filipino, Vietnamese, and Chinese for the promotional materials and the applications for these funds. These are things we routinely do in other areas, and I think it'd be appropriate for us to do with these funds as well.
Is that part of a motion?
That would be a motion to add to the recommendations.
Thank you. Supervisor Gaspar, I can't see if you have a hand up or not, are you?
I have no additional comments.
Okay.
I just have a question. How much, if we put this out in all these other languages, what is going to be the cost of that, and is that cost going to be taken away from the seventeen million? And then how long is it going to take to do that? Is that going to slow down the application process?
Helen, have you got a response for that?
I do, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you. We just received a quote from a translation company, Language Link. It's about eleven thousand dollars that would come from the seventeen million to do the translation. The more concerning part of that is- The more concerning part of that is it's a three-week lag time. So what I would propose is that we would go ahead and open up the website immediately. It is in English, and that we would try to, you know, help anybody that needed with the application while we would do those translation services, because if we wait three weeks, we are already up against a timeframe on getting this money out and spent in time. So that would be what my recommendation would be, if you decide to do the translation services. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I raise that issue, my understanding, we need to get this money out the door and spend it, or we lose it.
Well, I think you're right, but I don't know. I think, as Helen suggested, though, if we get the website up and running and do it in English initially, and then I guess it'd be three weeks before the translations would come out.
That's fine. I mean, that's fine if the rest of the board wants to do that.
Yeah, that's fine with me as the maker of the motion. I would just point out, like, we do, our public health orders are translated into many more languages than what we're talking about translating this to. The registrar of voters does that in exponentially more languages than we do our public health orders. Our CalFresh applications are available in multiple languages. This isn't something new or something that we don't do as a matter of course. And we're just talking about, again, we've narrowed it down to just the federal threshold languages, and I think we serve all of our constituents, and all of our constituents should have the opportunity to be able to get the promotional materials in their language they speak along with the application. And so I think, you know, I don't think this is an insurmountable task. If we want to move forward while we add in the translation as we go, then I'm fine with that. You know, that seems to be as fast as we can go, but this is not out of the ordinary for county operations.
Is there, to Mr. Montgomery, is there any legal issues with that?
No.
Okay. Supervisor Jacob, I can't remember if you seconded it or not.
Not yet. I'll second it. I, you know, I'd like to see $11,000 is $11,000. I'd like to see all of this go in for the purpose that we're talking about. And I think, I understand what Supervisor Fletcher was talking about. On the other hand, you know, a lot of people that come from different backgrounds, different races, and speak different English, different languages, they also speak English, and they're gonna, I mean, this is gonna have to be filled out in a form, and if it's in a different language, then somebody on county staff is gonna have the expertise to have to interpret that application in that language. I mean, maybe you all have somebody in all those languages on your staff. I don't. Maybe one. So I just don't want to slow down the process, because we have a little different situation in that we have a very short period of time to get this money out the door and to provide some help to those businesses that need help. So.
I get it. It's a, 11 grand is still a big, big number, but I think in spirit of what the speakers had all came forward, that we all, we take a look at the underserved communities, the opportunity zones, the minority-owned, the veteran-owned, the women-owned, and I guess, you know, the minority-owned would be those that can't speak English, or, you know, are more comfortable with the form in their own language. I'm willing to support.
Vice Chair, can I ask a question? Is there an ability to provide more of on-demand services to a non-English-speaking population, where we would provide the translation for somebody on request versus kind of preemptively translating everything?
Supervisor Gaspar, I would just add to that, that if they don't speak English, they're probably not going to know what it says to ask for help.
Most of our documents and things online, using that simple Google Translate, are translated on a frequent basis on our website. We have so many languages. Is it not possible to do a similar thing? I'm just looking at our code.
If we can do that, that would be great, because that would provide the instant translation in a variety of languages.
Yeah, because we do this. I'm noting, yeah, I'm noting that, like, on the COVID website, for example, that dropdown box, I mean, you'd be hard-pressed to find a language that's not on there. So I'm wondering how affordable that was and how we're doing that, because I don't remember spending a fortune on that, but maybe we did. I don't.
Helen, is there a cheaper alternative to provide those services as opposed to printing all, everything? I don't know. It seems.
I kind of like Supervisor Gaspar's idea on this. If there's.
We have a translation ability on the website. It's the links that would, for the application, that would need to be translated. So we could look for a cheaper solution. Again, I was just trying to get a quick estimate, because I figured you all were going to ask me. Certainly happy to do that, but we could also look to see if, on an individual case-by-case basis, for folks that are here on staff that might speak some of these different languages, and in our ROV, where we have folks that are employed already that speak multiple languages, perhaps we could do that on a case-by-case basis as well. We could look into that for sure.
All right, and I agree with you, Mr. Vice Chair, that, I mean, we want to make sure we're serving all of the community and equitably. Everybody has an equal chance at the stimulus money. At the same time, as I mentioned a couple times earlier, we need to get this money out the door. So however it ends up with the translation stuff, I want to get the applications ready, get it going as soon as possible.
Well, Supervisor Fletcher, would you be okay if you approve the item with asking Helen to get the most cost-effective translation services as soon as possible available to people that may need it?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
We could also work with some of our ethnic chambers as well to offer some help and that assistance, help us with that as well, if we needed it. So we will reach out to them as well.
I guess, and once you decide whatever that is, Helen, if you could just let the board know what, all the board offices know, what, how they can access those services if, as we need them.
I will do that. And let me just clarify with staff, the website is complete now and ready. It would be operational immediately. Ebony, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so at least in English, that would be available immediately, so we can get started on that, but I will let you all know how we can get those translation. And just for my own clarification, Supervisor Fletcher, that you were looking at the federal languages, is that correct?
Yeah, that was a floor. If it's possible to do it in more, then more is good.
Okay. More is good, I get it. Fewer is faster. So thank you.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We get a roll call vote.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Desmond. Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond, that motion passes with all supervisors who are present, voting aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to our final item, item 17. This is the County of San Diego and the San Diego County School District's Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note Program, Series 2020. And who's, somebody given, is there a presentation on this, or was this pulled by the public, or?
Vice Chair Desmond, this is Tracy Sandoval. I'm just going to need to read in a brief comment for this item to be heard off consent. To manage our annual cash flow needs, the county has historically issued tax and revenue anticipation notes, or TRANs, along with our participating school districts. This year, as in with the last several years, the county does not anticipate the need to issue a note, but in order to support local school districts, the county will coordinate this year's note program on their behalf. To date, repayment of these notes, I'm sorry, excuse me, the repayment of these notes will be the responsibility of the individual school districts. To date, there are anticipated to be about eight participating school districts borrowing an aggregate amount of not to exceed $166 million. So while the county will not be issuing a short-term note this year ourselves, I recommend approval for the county to execute the 2020 TRANs program on behalf of the local school districts. Subject to any questions, this concludes my comments.
All right. Well, thank you, Tracy. Do we have any questions?
Move the CAO recommendation on item 17.
Second.
Is that a second, Supervisor Fletcher?
That was a second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Jacob, second by Supervisor Fletcher. There's no other discussion. We'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Well, I guess before I vote, was there any public comment on this item?
Mr. Vice Chairman, there were no requests to speak on this item.
Okay, I'll vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes with all supervisors who are present, voting aye.
All right. Andrew, we don't have any other items. Zoe?
Mr. Vice Chairman, there are no additional items for the board's discussion today.
We do have, well, thank you. We do have one adjournment. We actually have two, but Chairman Cox is going to give his tomorrow. Supervisor Gaspar, do you have an adjournment today?
Hi, yes, thank you very much. Today, I'd like to provide an adjournment in memory of Bernard Yave. The world lost a warrior in Bernard Mariano Yave on Saturday, May 16, 2020. Bernard was diagnosed with acute myeloid leukemia in August 2012. With only a five-year survival rate for adults of less than 30%, Bernard quietly and bravely fought and survived for eight more years. During his 45 years, Bernard lived fully, loved wholeheartedly, and courageously gave us hope while battling a disease that has little. Bernard was born August 19, 1974, in Norwich, Connecticut. He spent his childhood in Oak Harbor, Washington, and his teenage years in Oxnard, California, before moving to San Diego, California for college, where he ultimately settled. He attended San Diego State University and then went to work for FedEx Express, where he spent the next 23 years. Growing up, Bernard was smart, kind, funny, and made friends with every person he met. He was always active. He played basketball, tennis, and ran track. He was in ASB, Honor Society, president of Future Business Leaders of America, and part of the mock trial team. Many friends remember him teaching them how to drive stick in his Datsun 280ZX, complete with a disco ball and colored lights. Because he was so good at making acquaintances, he always knew a guy and was always willing to help when needed. One of Bernard's many attributes was his genuine interest and concern for others over himself. He made everyone feel special and like one of his best friends. He often ended a text with a heart or an "I love you." He was a great hugger. He never forgot your birthday or to check on you when you were going through hard times. If you were a runner, he always invited you to run a race with him, and if you weren't, he would invite you anyway and cheer you on. In 2002, Bernard met the woman who would become the love of his life, his wife, his soulmate, Dee Christman. Together, they would create Be Strong, a foundation dedicated to raising money and awareness for blood cancers. Team Be Strong raised close to $2 million for blood cancer research through the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Together, they inspired and gave hope to cancer families across the country. After his diagnosis in 2012, Bernard found a new hero in his sister, Maribel. There was only a 25% chance of being a match with a sibling, but amazingly, Maribel was. Through her donation and ultimately two transplants, Bernard and Maribel solidified a bond that few people are blessed enough to form. Dee and Maribel, along with his parents, Abner and Lourdes, walked hand-in-hand with Bernard through eight years of treatment, at least 80 rounds of chemo, full-body radiation, three relapses, two transplants, two clinical trials, and three types of AML. Bernard's modesty was charming, and his gentleness thrived in stark contrast to his competitive and relentless spirit. When asked of his legacy, Bernard said, "It would be to never give up, no matter what you're going through." He was a man of faith and integrity. He knew the odds were against him, but he fought not only for his own survival, but for the sake of finding a cure. May the sacrifices he made be a blessing to those who will one day not suffer because of him. We are all better for having known him. Bernard is survived by his partner in life and devoted wife, Dee Christman, and her daughter, Elizabeth, his parents, Lourdes and Abner Yave, his sister and brother-in-law, Maribel, and Robert Frigariot, and many aunts, uncles, and cousins. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Supervisor Gaspar. Mr. Potter, do we have anything else, any announcements or things we have to make?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'll just note for the record that item 23 in the regular agenda and item 1 on the County of San Diego Sanitation District are closed session matters. Those will be continued until tomorrow.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We'll see everyone tomorrow morning for the land use meeting on July 8 at 9:00 a.m. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.